Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd just like to say, great first day. Thank you to the faculty and staff. We had all of our students, six through 12, return today. It was almost like the first day of school. I'm sure Mr. Riley can add some comments when he comes up for discussion as well about his experience. But I just want to say thank you to everyone. Just fantastic. And I was able to get outside and see a lot of the kids practicing sports. We had middle school kids out there doing sports. We had everything going on. It was great. So, thank you to everyone. Spring COVID data. I just want to update the committee from the report that I submitted with current numbers. So currently, right now, we have eight cases in the district. There are three at MHS, two at Jarek, three at Richer, zero at Wickham, zero at Goodnow, zero at Kane, zero at ECC. So that's the update for cases. I included the confirmed cases in the city. That also has gone down. The last number I saw was 54 cases. So that was a drop from when I had reported. And then, on the statewide numbers, the total number of cases continues to drop. The testing average continues to drop. Hospitalizations is dropping, and deaths continue to drop as well. I just wanted to also say to anybody watching, there are plenty of appointments available for a vaccine shot at the Marriott. I have asked Ms. Moore, the communications coordinator, to repost the city's Facebook post on our Facebooks. That way, people know if they're watching our Facebook, and we have quite a few people who do, that there are lots of appointments available. They're at the Marriott. Go ahead. Please go on down and get those shots. That would be fantastic.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yes.
Just go on the city website. It's very easy to sign up. There's no insurance required. There's no impairment required. We're looking to really shake the bushes and get everyone down there. So, as the superintendent said, there's plenty of openings. We finally found the mother lode of vaccines. So, and I want to thank the Edward and Kennedy Health Center. It's one of Worcester and Framingham, and I believe Milford, for coming through. They're getting a federal allotment. So all these are from the feds, not from the state. And we're really excited about it. So get down there, and you're in and out. There's no big lines. You're in and out. You go at your appointment time. The only thing we ask you to do is stay in your car until five minutes before the appointment. You'll get right in and right out.
Fifteen minute wait.
What's that?
Fifteen minute wait.
And a fifteen minute wait unless you're me and I have to wait 30 minutes, so.
And I look forward to continuing to work with Mr. Garside on looking at options for us to continue to support this effort for vaccinations. I know as of, I believe, last Monday, it became available for all residents age 16 and older, which means that hopefully, at some point, we can work together and maybe even offer some school-based clinics to get kids vaccinated. And I really look forward to that. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Robotics competition. The middle school world championship will take place from May 17th to 19th, and it's a virtual event. The robotics team will be utilizing the field set up in Room 114 at Wickham for remote live skill competitions. Wickham has not qualified for the world competition since 2014. Here are the students from Wickham who qualified for Worlds. Caitlin Massey is an eighth grade student who has been involved in the robotics program since the end of her fifth grade year. She and her teammates in the past have done very well at the regional competitions but have come up short in qualifying for Worlds. This season, her work has been all independent. She has scored many goal points with her amazing robot named Ivy. She programmed a sensor to differentiate between blue and red colored balls, scoring the red and discarding the blue. Andre DeFarias is a seventh grade student who was in the program for a short time as a sixth grader but decided to try the program again. His determination has led him down a path of success, continually improving his robot and practicing his skills as often as possible. I'm sure we'll be seeing more of Andre and his robot creations in the future. I included a link to the agenda. So, as always, a special thanks to Mr. Gay and Ms. Mahoney for their continued work with the fantastic program for the Wickham students. Thank you very much for that. Tonight, Mr. Riley is here for a couple reasons, but first, to talk about MCAS testing at MHS. So Principal Riley is going to request permission to have an alternate schedule to accommodate MCAS testing at Grade 10. We've traditionally done this in the past, so it's really no different this year. We've always asked for some flexibility in our schedule. Here are the details. On the testing dates, students who are testing in Grade 10 will report to school in person at the normal start time. Students who are not testing will begin school at 10:40 a.m., and it will be 100% remote. We're going to run three periods each day after testing. The periods will alternate to support balance over the four days. Grade 10 students will participate in the first two periods after testing in person until dismissal. And the days are Monday, May 10th, ELA Session 1; Tuesday, May 11th, ELA Session 2; Wednesday, May 12th, Math Session 1; Thursday, May 13th, Math Session 2. In addition, some 11th grade students may opt in to test on these dates as well. One thing I would like to point out is with the commissioner's announcement today that all high school students have to be back in person on May 17th, this still allows us this flexibility. This week was chosen before that announcement, but this happens to line up because after May 17th, you would not be able to do this. Because as of May 17th, virtual or remote learning would not be eligible as part of the time on learning requirement from the commissioner. So this matches up with the announcement of the commissioner today. I have one more item, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Riley if he has any comments on that. School improvement plans. I'm working with my principals and leadership team to produce a template for the school improvement plans. Since we'll not have MCAS data, we're going to be using the May NWEA formative assessments. We'll have multiple data points for each student, and we'll look forward to continuing to build more data from this program over time. The school improvement plans will be presented to me for approval, and I will forward them to the school committee so you can also review them. My expected date would be September of 2021 for the school improvement plans. And now, I'd like to ask Mr. Riley if he has any comments on the request for the MCAS testing at MHS, or if I've said anything that was wrong. Dan, please let me know.
Thanks, Superintendent Bergeron. Thank you, Mayor Vigent, and members of the committee, too. We had a wonderful first day today. And man, I can't tell you, since March 11th, 2020, and we realize today how long it's been since we've had the students back with us. And it was, I was very grateful to have them there today. So thank you for your support with that. It was a wonderful day for everybody. So with the testing request, we want to provide an appropriate environment, as Superintendent Bergeron said, for sophomores. But then also, we have 27 juniors that have signed up voluntarily to come in and test for scholarship purposes. So we'll also be providing those students with an opportunity. We want to give them the very best environment that we can to be successful on the MCAS exams, as it will count as a graduation requirement for this sophomore class. Thank you.
Questions from the committee? Any questions? Ms. Tennessee?
Thank you very much. Mr. Riley, just a quick question. With the MCAS testing, will the setup be similar to how it has been in the past for kids to be spread out in multiple rooms as opposed to this past year when they needed to take, like, the SATs? There were only larger groups, and I'm just curious about the testing facility site?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great question. Just to clarify, yes, that's the reasoning behind this particular request is so that we don't have to do mass group testing sessions in the library or in the cafeteria. There's a better chance for distraction and not such an appropriate testing environment. So if we can break them out into classrooms across the school, which is our goal with this plan, then we feel like that would be a little bit more appropriate for them to have a good environment to be successful in.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure, because I think, as you were alluding to, it was pretty tough for the kids having everybody be in those, you know, set areas. So this is great if we can get back to having that separated testing area. So thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions from the committee?
Sorry, different question. Can I ask?
Keep going. You're on a roll.
Okay, good. Thanks. So with the NWEA assessment information, is it possible, not obviously that we need all of the details, but is it possible for us to get some of the broader strokes information about the data so that we can see some of the data from previous to May, you know, so that we can see some of the progression along the way?
Yeah, we're having our last testing of the year in early May. And I'm sure after that, we can bring forward some data. I think there's, this will be our third testing of the year. And I think the really great thing of using the same product over and over is now we have trends, and we can say, you know, this is where we stand against the norms, the RITS, if you will, of the test. And it's a really powerful product. So I look forward to that. I think we can probably do that near late May or early June.
Yeah, I was just, I mean, honestly, I was just hoping that maybe we could have it so that over the summer, we could have time to kind of digest it, because I'm sure it's going to be a massive load of information. And, you know, I don't envy you all going through all of it, but I think it's helpful for us to kind of get a better idea of what you all are seeing and the trends relative towards planning and stuff. So, thank you. That'd be great.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. This is a question from Mr. Riley. So, are AP tests also going to be separate? Because I was looking on my schedule today, and it said that my test was in the cafeteria. But you were just talking about how you don't want the test to be in the cafeteria, so I wasn't sure if it's different or not.
Yeah, no, that's a great question, Allison. Let me look at the plan with guidance and the assistant principals. I know that we do have AP testing happen simultaneously on some of these days, and it may be a larger AP exam. So let me look to see what we can do to renegotiate that if that is the case. But thank you for mentioning it, and I could definitely look into it tomorrow for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions from the committee?
Sorry, one more. Vaccine-wise, out of curiosity, just because we're going to start having college students that will be coming home within the next, you know, number of weeks, do you feel like that's still going to be available for a little while, that we'll have them here in Marlboro?
Oh, we're hoping so. We're figuring that if we can get a full month of May in, if the vaccines keep coming, and we're anticipating that they're going to keep coming, that we should be in pretty good shape, so.
Thank you. I just think that many parents, I know myself, having a college student that is out of state, kind of waiting to get them home before necessarily going through the vaccination process. I'm sure there are a lot of families that are in that similar situation, so it's good to know that you'll have it here. So, thank you.
And the testing is still going, and we're doing, we're still doing over 1,600 tests a week in the city. So, we're still doing a lot of testing. Any other questions from the committee? Any other questions for the superintendent? Mr. Diaz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is tonight's update from Finance and Operations. FY '21 school budget. The district has finally, well, I don't want to say finally, but it is my favorite time of the year, has started its fiscal closing process for the FY '21 budget. Schools and other budget centers will finalize FY '21 ordering by May 14th, at which point we will have a more complete understanding of any funds that are available for end-of-year projects. As usual, we will be working closely with our city counterparts in May and June, leading into the closing of the fiscal year. FY '22 budget public hearing. We are holding our FY '22 School Committee Budget Public Hearing tonight. Members of the community will be able to call during public participation to provide commentary on the FY '22 School Committee budget. We will then ask the school committee to formally vote on the budget after the public hearing, at which point, if the vote is affirmative, the FY '22 budget will go to the mayor and the city council. Before and after school programs. Our before and after school program partners, the Boys and Girls Club, currently have availability at all four elementary programs. Generally, they are full. They weren't. But with the students coming back, enrollment has been climbing, but right now, there are still some spots available in all four schools. I also wanted to mention that they are running a summer program this summer out of Kane, and a flyer is attached to this report, but also available in all of the virtual backpacks in English, Portuguese, and Spanish. If parents are interested in either program, they can call the club directly at 508-485-4912. Thank you.
Any questions from the committee? I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Grades K through 5. K through 5 now, or K through 5 in September?
It's a good question, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure. I can clarify though. I think it's K through 5 now.
Okay.
But if there is somebody coming into kindergarten that's interested in the summer program, I don't see why they wouldn't allow it, but it's a good question.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. O'Brien.
Good evening. Similar to my earlier report regarding the special education audit conducted by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Marlboro Public Schools also had a review of the English learner program this year. Lynn Medaliu, Director of the English Learner Programs, will provide a summary of that review.
Hello. Is it all me now? Hello. Thank you so much for having me virtually, but it's great to be with you all and talk about our tiered focus monitoring review, which of course had been scheduled for spring of the 2019-2020 school year. But like so much else, it was delayed due to the COVID-19 pandemic. However, before the actual interviews were delayed, we did the part of the self-assessment, of course, of the program, which included all the documents to illustrate our work as held up to 12 English language education criteria. And also, the Department of Education asks for a review of student records, and so we sent in 25 student records as they requested. It was suspended and not rescheduled until the fall of 2020, and we had our virtual interviews on December 1st of 2020. David Vallade, who is the Language Acquisition Support Lead for DASSI's Office of Language Acquisition and Center of Instructional Support, was the person doing the interviews. He interviewed three EL educators and myself, and at the conclusion of the review on December 1st, Mr. Vallade held a virtual exit meeting with me to talk about the interviews and his initial findings. It was a great conversation, especially since he was full of compliments, which is always nice. He commended Marlboro's EL program, especially in the areas of curriculum and parent involvement. And he pointed out that these are two areas that most often are found wanting in programs. And so he said, "We should be very proud of this." On the front of ELD curriculum, this is something that myself and the rest of the EL department has been working on since about 2017 and continue to work on because we think curriculum is never done, not if you want it to be great. So it was really nice to have that be highlighted. And in the area of parent involvement, some of the things that he highlighted was our participation in developing the LPAC, English Learner Parent Advisory Council Training Modules that DASSI developed last January. We had an entire film crew come, and it feels like January 2020 was so long ago, and we must have just snuck in there. But the film crew came, interviewed a bunch of EL staff, some of our translation departments, and many incredible parents because these modules will be used throughout the state for either districts who are not as far along in their development of the LPAC as we have been. And also, there's modules for parents who might be interested in the LPAC and want to find out more about them. I personally hate being videotaped, so I did that out of my love of Marlboro District. Thank you very much. It was, it was pretty miserable and wonderful at the same time. We were also commended for our ongoing language classes. As you know, for many years now, we have had adult ESL classes for our community. And the past few years, we have also offered staff Portuguese and Spanish lessons, which, so excited to start up again this year virtually, and that has been wonderful. And lastly, also in the area of family engagement, they talked about our heritage classes. We had at the middle school and the high school, we had heritage language Portuguese classes. These were volunteer-run for members of our Portuguese-speaking community for the students who wanted to maintain and grow their Portuguese language skills in hopes that in high school, they would be contenders for the seal of bilinguality, which was awarded to many of our graduating seniors last year. So it was very exciting to hear all of that. The final report was delivered in January, this past January of 2021, and the only finding was in ELE 10, which is parental notification, due to the fact that some of our student folders were missing some required documentation. We have quite a thorough process in the registration center in the EL department to collect these documents. So it was a welcomed review of that process, if it was not working the way it should have, to see what we needed to tweak or fix in that area. And so, that correction active corrective action plan was submitted on April 9th, and the due date of the next submission is on August 31st. But I would be remiss if I did not thank Michelle Blair, Assistant Director of EL, for her incredible work putting together a lot of the documents and the reports that we need to do in the initial part of it, as well as our EL coordinators, Audrey King, Karen Rusacki, Megan Cardio, and Jen Pistone, and all of the EL teachers who worked on our curriculum to make it worthy of such praise. So that was a very exciting conclusion to a very long process.
Any questions from the committee before we move on? Ms. Tennessee?
Actually, I'm just going to congratulate you because that has to feel pretty good considering, you know, how you all have taken this on and really grown the specifics around EL in a large way for support. And I have to say, I kept on looking, thinking that there was, there must have been like another thing that they needed to come back to us on, and there wasn't. And that's not a slight on you all. It's just that with as much that needs to get done at times, you know, you just kind of envision that maybe there's going to be something else they're going to find to improve upon. So kudos to you all and all of the hard work. Obviously, we've got lots more to do, but you guys have done a great job, and thank you for that for our community.
Thank you so much. It was great, especially, you know, when I compare it to our review in 2015, which we had some other things we had to really work on. The growth has been amazing, and the staff is amazing. So thank you very much, because it's been a lot of work, and we're very proud of it.
Anyone else? Ms. Bowden Hendra.
I just want to give you kudos as well, and to Jody for, two for two now with excellent reviews from DASSI.
Definitely couldn't have done this without Lynn. That's all her.
Oh, for sure. And just, you know, thrilled that all of the parent involvement stuff, which we know that that is the key to so much of this, and we didn't used to have it, and now, you know, it's paying off. So.
Well, and as I'm here talking to you at Marlboro High School, we have a group of parents of EL students talking about life after high school and possibilities for their students right here going on right now. So it's very exciting.
Fantastic. Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you.
Anyone else? Can you get them all down for a vaccine, though? Work on that for me.
I would. I would love to do that. We would love to be your first stop if you start doing students. My poor students who got all up to date on their vaccinations, no one could lift their arms for about two weeks.
Sign them up. Get them down there. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you, Dan.
Okay. Moving on to the public hearing, Mr. Superintendent. Ms. Matthews.
Can I have an answer to your question on the discovery camp?
Okay.
The license is for ages 5 to 14. So, that is the answer.
It is?
Yes.
That's different.
Current kindergarten.
That's.
No, it could be incoming.
It's incoming.
14 is not fifth grade, though.
14 is a little old to you.
Right, but the license is for 5 to 14.
Okay.
That came from them. I'm just telling you that.
Thank you. So, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I am going to ask the mayor to call a public hearing on the FY '22 budget proposal. Just for everyone at home, the budget proposal is $66,654,566. We did post a notice for seven days, and to dial in to the public hearing to speak either in favor or against the budget, you can dial 774-243-0611, and the conference ID is 496-977-496-POUND. Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to call the public hearing.
We're going to take this public hearing in four stages: public speaking in favor, any questions from the public, and public speaking in opposition, and then any questions from the school committee. Is there anyone speaking in favor of the proposal of the proposed budget? Is there anyone online that would like to speak in favor of the budget? Anyone online that would like to speak in favor of the budget? Mr. Diaz, what do you got?
There are no callers, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any questions from the public on the budget? Are there any questions from the public on the budget? Are there any questions? Nope.
Still no callers, Mr. Mayor.
Is there anyone online that would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to the budget? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Anyone on there, Mr. Diaz?
Nobody on the line.
Seeing none, I'll open for any additional questions from the school committee. Are there any additional questions from the committee? Any additional questions from the committee? Anyone online, Mr. Diaz?
No callers, Mr. Mayor.
In my favorite part, I'm calling this public hearing closed. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Modified MCAS adjustment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Riley and I both presented, we are asking for a modified schedule for Grade 10's spring 2021 MCAS testing. Additionally, with Mr. Riley's update, that we have 27 Grade 11 students who will also be participating. We are looking for a modified schedule, May 10th through May 13th. We did present the times, and we are asking for the school committee to grant us a modified schedule for that week.
Move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries. MHS Program of Studies.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will have Mr. Riley speak again. He has reviewed the Program of Studies, and he has offered some recommendations for changes. There is a memo that is directed to the school committee and copied to me that Mr. Riley wrote on April 9th, which did spell out some of the changes to the Program of Studies. I didn't know if there were any questions at this time, or whether the school committee would like to approve the Program of Studies for next year.
I would say there's a lot of questions.
Okay. Ms. Bowden Hendra.
I see you're sitting down, Mr. Riley. Good. Where should I start? I'll just make an overall statement that I was personally taken aback by what I saw with the Program of Studies in terms of what seems to me large swaths of courses that are disappearing. I had no knowledge that there was an issue with the Mandarin program. The last we heard anything was that we were going to be pairing back French. And now I'm seeing that Chinese is gone from our district, which I'm horrified. I have some issues with what's going on in the engineering and in the business departments at the upper levels. All those upper-level classes seem to be going away. I just, can you kind of walk us through what your thinking was in some of this stuff?
Can I first answer the question about French and Mandarin? I think what we're seeing is there has been a demand for students to take French. There's much more signups for it, including actually folks who want to get into French 2 and beyond, but we've seen very little demand. But we've seen very little demand for student signups for Mandarin at all. I believe, Mr. Riley can probably tell me if I'm wrong, but I believe last year we only had eight students who were even interested in going into Mandarin total out of that whole class coming in. And we had a much larger percentage of students, I think it was 25 if I'm not wrong, looking to access French. So we're trying to just move with the students' requests to try to make that happen. Mr. Riley, can you maybe give a little bit more detail on that?
Yeah, absolutely, Superintendent Bergeron. It's exactly as Superintendent Bergeron just described it. Last year with the requests, we had eight for Mandarin, we had almost 40 for French. And so that caused a bit of a shift in the program. We didn't have a Mandarin one session, section that was offered this year. We did continue with the Mandarin 3 part for students that were moving on in the program. But with respect to an incoming group, our Mandarin program, for some of you might know this already, is split in terms of the teacher and the qualifications. It's very hard to find a Mandarin teacher. We are most fortunate that we do have a certified Mandarin teacher who also teaches in our EL department. And so decisions need to be made around how much are we gonna offer with the Mandarin program in which we could then maybe think about offering for the EL program. So that's kind of how the decision-making has occurred so far. But as always, I've always said with this process, I'm open to feedback, and it's important for me to hear what you have to say. I'm trying to make the best decisions that I can make with the resources that we have teaching-wise in terms of what we're doing, in terms of the courses that we're offering, which is why we brought back the French program.
Okay, man, I hear you with the French. And if there's that high a demand for it, then I'll be, you know, we should certainly offer it. You know, some of this is going back to our decision a couple of years ago to discontinue the languages at the middle school. And, you know, I... We worked so hard to get that Mandarin program into our district, and to find out that this is how it's going away, I'm really upset that we hadn't heard any of this before. And I actually reached out to a couple of people because I thought, maybe I missed something. It's, it is... So, so for one thing, and you say it very well in your introduction to the Program of Studies, that sometimes in some years, we're not able to offer certain courses. So I guess I don't understand why it's not going to just stay in the Program of Studies and perhaps not be offered this year if there isn't enough of a desire for it. But to just erase it from the Program of Studies, to me, is... I have a problem with it. What about the other students that are in the school at varying other levels of, like those Mandarin 3 students? Are they aging out? Are they not interested in continuing? What's going on with them?
The group has decreased. It is extremely small. And if we have two or three of them that would be continuing on to Mandarin 4, I would be surprised. So that's, it's all been based on recommendations with the changes in the program. And all the numbers, I can assure you, have fallen to what I would deem an unacceptable number in terms of trying to allocate the teaching sections to those number of students. What we can look at and what we have looked at is virtual offerings through the virtual high school. Now, that's not ideal when it comes to Mandarin. But again, we're trying to make the best decisions that we can with the staff that we have. And so that's what's happened with the program in terms of the dryup of the... And I do agree with you. I think that when there isn't a feeder system from the middle level, that that directly impacts what we see in terms of interest coming into the high school because a lot of students that have had the language opportunities at the middle school have now had either Spanish or Latin as their options. And so Mandarin hasn't been part of the pipeline. And that has impacted, I think, what we are seeing at the high school level. I will say this. I do respect and trust Mrs. Cook, who is our certified Mandarin teacher. She's actually the one who brought the Mandarin program to Marlboro and started it in Marlboro. Mrs. Cook has explained to me that Mandarin has been losing enrollment across the country. It's not just a Marlboro issue. Across the country, Mandarin has been losing steam. And she may be that, very aware of that when she came to teach Mandarin last year. And she was thrilled that we still had a program. She was not surprised at all to know that our program numbers were dropping, and even was skeptical to think that even if we did have our feeder system at the middle school, if we were providing the choice for students. Because if you remember when we had a really large group of Mandarin students, the decision was made to make those students take Mandarin. They didn't have a choice at the middle level in terms of what language they took. And that gave us a tremendous enrollment in Mandarin, and it really did fuel the startup of the program. What Mrs. Cook was explaining from what she's seen and the discussions she's had with other Mandarin colleagues is that nationwide, it's been losing steam. And when choice is a component, a lot of students are not choosing Mandarin right now.
Is there a way that we can keep it in and just not fill it for right now?
Yeah, I think that's been one of the...
Absolutely.
Dan, I'll jump in on that one. I think we've had this discussion a couple of times about whether we keep things in the program or not keep them in the program. And I feel like we've gone both ways. So I don't think leaving it in there and saying this course still exists, but it's not running, I think that's fine. I don't really see an issue with that. But I think previously, we were saying we were gonna try to remove courses that weren't running and then bring them back when they were gonna run.
But we'd never bring them back. They never come back.
Well, if there's no student demand, it may not come back.
It may not. I understand that. But I'm just, I'm not ready to let it go.
I'm not either.
I understand. I understand where you're coming from.
So can we talk about the business...
Would you like me to jump into the business discussion now? You brought up some good questions about business.
And also the engineering. And I understand we're losing a staff member that was highly involved with the engineering to retirement. How dare he? But there are other people out there that could teach it. So I'm just curious, what's the thinking on those? Please?
I'm still trying to convince him to stay, by the way. The school year is not over yet. But, so let me start with business, if you don't mind, because I think that's a little bit more straightforward to discuss. So with the removed courses that you're seeing, I just want to point out with international business, that has yet to run. That has been part of the Program of Studies. It has not run based on request. And I think it's been in the Program of Studies for at least two or three years. And I don't ever look at anything as completely disappearing. I understand what you're saying, Mrs. Bodenhendiger, that when things go away, they don't tend to come back. But one of the things I think I've seen internally is that we have expanded electives. And in some of this Program of Studies, I can point some of that out as well. I don't think things necessarily go away as much as they evolve because our business department is still gonna be three people strong going into next year. We're still offering the courses that will correlate with those three positions. So if something gets changed, like in the case of the accounting courses, for example, what we spearheaded this year was to take a look at how are colleges framing the business experience, the entry-level business experience, and how does that compare with what our Program of Studies looks like? We changed the names of some of our courses. Like, for example, we went from Marketing 1 and 2 to Fundamentals of Marketing and also Social Media Marketing Strategies in order to really, again, align with that first entry-level experience that will give our students the leg up based on their transcript. Similarly, in accounting, we're looking at renaming to Principles of Financial Accounting and Reporting, and secondly, Principles of Managerial Accounting. Now, when it comes to the Advanced Accounting 3 and the College Accounting 4, again, two courses with very, very low enrollment. What my intentions are is to see us continue to grow the Financial Literacy course that we've started to offer students. In that, if not many students are gonna be picking to take Accounting 3 and Accounting 4, then what we do want to do is get more students to take Financial Literacy. But if we tie up two sections of our accounting teacher's schedule with Accounting 3 and Accounting 4, then that's two sections of Financial Literacy that we can't offer. So you understand the sliding scale. Personally, as an accounting and finance major in college, and I know, Mr. Mayor, that you could speak volumes to this as well, I really feel like we have to give students a solid foundation in these areas so that when they go to business school, they have a range of understandings across various areas. When, what we have done in some departments, and I'll talk a little bit about this in engineering as well, is we have built long trajectories that keep students in one specific skill set for up to all four years that they're at Marlboro High School. So when they've been a part of the business department, they've taken all the accounting courses that we have to offer, but they haven't dipped into marketing. They haven't dipped into information technology. What we're trying to do is advance the introductory experiences that we offer to students, but then also be able to get them to be encouraged to take things across the department so they're not with any single teacher for the entire time that they're at MHS. Because, as you know, in these areas, specifically business and engineering, when we hire teachers, and we have hired a teacher to come in and teach CAD for next year, too, that's important for you to know. When we hire teachers, they do tend to be specialized in specific areas. Business is a great example of that. We have a person that specializes in accounting and finance. We have another person that specializes in marketing and entrepreneurship. And we have a third person that we'll be looking to hire that will specialize in information technology. They're all very different skill sets when it comes to the teachers that we hire. And we really wanna, we wanna be comprehensive. So we're not necessarily removing things as much as we're gonna be encouraging students to take things across the departments that they find themselves rooted in and interested in. I hope that makes sense, at least for the business piece.
It absolutely makes sense, and it's actually the answer that I was hoping for because when looking through all the other courses, and I know a couple of years ago, we really pushed you to develop one semester courses so kids could be, you know, exploring other electives. And you've really done that. And this is a great example of it. And so to see, you know, kids getting maybe the breadth of experience of business as, maybe not as much depth, but the breadth of it as a preparation for college or, you know, a career in the business world, I think makes a lot of sense. So I, I'm pleased to hear that answer. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And similarly, in computer-aided design, manufacturing, automation, robotics, we really want to get to a place where our students are exposed across the spectrum of those skill sets. We still will have a very strong computer-aided design program. Mr. DePussy has even weighed in and understands what we're trying to do with a focus on the entry-level coursework for next year and encouraging students to dip their toes into introductory robotics, into our advanced manufacturing courses. We want them to leave Marlboro High School understanding all aspects of advanced manufacturing. And so that's why we're trying to take the program in those directions, not necessarily removing things as much as we're trying to increase capacity across all three areas simultaneously, similar to the business department.
Yep, I understand now. Thank you for that explanation.
Oh, you're very welcome.
I had one question, and I'm really pleased to hear you talk more about beefing up the personal finance because it's critical. I mean, we all know that. And as a society, we haven't done a good job of educating our young people about finance. But the thing that I was confused about is that it says that it's being removed from the History Department. Is it being moved to the Business Department? But then again, I saw that it's actually still in the Program of Studies even though it says it's being removed. So I was kind of just confused about that.
Absolutely. It's a great question. So it's traditionally been taught across both departments. And our economics teacher in the History Department, Mr. Kylie, has picked up sections of Principles of Financial Literacy in the past. So in addition to the AP Economics and the honors-level economics, micro and macroeconomics that he's teaching, which actually does fall under the history standards, there's this gray area where financial literacy can exist either in history or in business, and we're just shifting it over to business for continuity and consistency. That also helps us to fuel, in the History Department, more elective options because that is, out of the four core areas, that's our smallest department. So every section that we can offer in that department really does count. And we want to have the financial literacy existing in the Business Department so we can offer more in the History Department for those electives.
Got it. And my last comment is I love that we're adding cooking to the Wellness Department. Fantastic.
Yeah, I have to give a shout out to Mr. Padilla and his work on that as part of the Hildreth program last year. And what we really tried to do thoughtfully this year, as you know, when we've talked about the merger of Hildreth and MHS, is not lose any of the momentum that was developed in the planning pre-COVID. We had a lot of great things that were under construction that would have benefited both buildings, and we were looking at it that way. The Wellness Program offering these cooking opportunities were two of those opportunities that we didn't want to lose. One of these, the Cooking Methods class, actually has a certification link to it so that when students go through the two-course trajectory, they can, they finish the coursework with a certificate where they can go out and seek employment, and they're a qualified employee in the food industry because of the experience that we had. That's really what we're trying to do across the board with all of our elective areas. We want to see that, we've done it in the area of healthcare with the EMT certification program now for the second year. That's probably the best example. But we want to increase within our coursework in information technology, in advanced manufacturing, other areas of healthcare where students can, as they pursue their trajectory at MHS, as they start to learn about their college and career aspirations, they can take coursework that ends with a formal certification so that they can then go out into our community and seek employment and be valuable employees to what industry needs in the Marlboro community.
Fantastic. I appreciate it. That's great. And I just want to do a segue, and then I'll sit back and let anybody else who wants to talk, talk. But can we segue? Can I ask at some time, maybe before the end of the year, if it's possible? Could we have a presentation from Mr. Padilla about the alternative ed? I had a bunch of questions myself, so I did reach out to him myself, and he agreed that it might make sense. He's on board to do it, if it can fit into your scheduling, if we could hear from him about the new program. That would be great. Thank you.
Other questions from the committee? Any other questions? Mr. Crusoe?
Yeah, Dan, could you do me a favor and just give me the rationale for the in-and-out and the music program? Just why things went in and why things went out?
Yeah, absolutely. I do, I do work a lot with the supervisors, in this case with Mr. Rosenthal, on the changes to the programs. So as COVID has really impacted, a lot of our elective trajectories, music was no exception to that. And so what we're really trying to do with this coursework is offer an opportunity to rejuvenate the program, coming back off of COVID, hopefully into a normal school year next year with normal class selections, a normal schedule, a normal school day. This was really how Mr. Rosenthal felt that this would best be done. And I do defer to him and trust him on the development of some of these new courses that should hopefully help bring some more of the fundamental-level music available to high school students. In addition to that, there's a couple of other courses that are being introduced, like the Topics in Music and Pop Culture. And what Mr. Rosenthal and I have discussed, and also members of the department have discussed, is our music program is exceptional. As far as I'm concerned, our performing groups are absolutely amazing. They reaffirm that every single year when they go out and they compete, and we see the number of students qualifying for states. And they have these wonderful recognitions that are just constantly coming in. In addition to that, we want... In addition to that, we want music to become an experience that touches more students throughout the school, that all of us, every day in our lives, have music as a part of that in some way, whether we're listening to music in our car on our way home, or whatever it is, music is in our lives almost every day, all of us. And so we want to offer options that are going to attract students to the music program that may not be your typical performers with the instruments or with the vocals. That's where we've traditionally had our pipelines. We're really trying, over the last two years, to expand beyond that and to offer things that are going to help bring more students into the music program with those additional offerings. So I don't know if that was too general, or if you have any specific questions around specific courses, but I hope that gives you at least an overview explanation.
Well, the one I was particularly interested in was the English Music Learners, because I thought that was a really successful program, and it was doing so many things at so many different levels, just seemed kind of odd to see it being removed.
Actually, that particular course, I was surprised when I saw it, it's never run. From at least my experience at MHS, I think the one that you're referring to, Mr. Crusoe, is the Learn to Jam course, which has had tremendous success with our ELs. But the Music for English Learners, or the English Music Learners course, that has not actually run, and I believe that the intentions are going to be to potentially evolve into a vocal offering for students that's more internationally-based, and that is still somewhat in development for the music department. But that is part of their list of aspirations as they continue to expand their offerings.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
Any other questions? Mrs. Hennessy.
Thank you very much. So I'll pick up off of Mr. Crusoe. I'm going to give you guys huge kudos, and please, back to Mr. Rosenthal and all of the music group. They did the semester courses that we've been talking about, so I'm thrilled. I can't wait to see how it continues to grow and change and adapt, because I'm thinking of just the wonderful thing that they did for the seniors for the football game over vacation, where it was this small group, Ms. Allison was there, I saw her, and I have to say, yes, I'm a sap, I bawled my eyes out when I happened to go on Facebook, and here I caught this live thing of the kids playing, and it was like a pep band. You know, to me, that's a great opportunity for a semester course, and this is, that just meant so much, Allison, I got to tell you, I literally, you would have thought I was like the biggest weirdo, but I just like started bawling my eyes out, seeing that you guys had that opportunity to be there, and I'm grateful that you did. But to me, that's, my segue is that that's exactly what I'm talking about, are those wonderful semester opportunities where some of these kids that may need to academically have a trajectory where they need to take two sciences, or, you know, whatever, a whole swath of different things, because they really want to go into biomedical or something, and they can't do a full year of music, that gives them their flavor and their taste of being able to still be involved and not lose that love of music. So yay, that's great, keep it going, please, but that's awesome. So yeah, going back on what Ms. Bodenheder had started, I, too, was pretty flipped out about the whole Mandarin, although I think if you remember me a couple of years ago, when we had this discussion when it was being removed at middle school, I was pretty flipped out then. I hear, and thank you for the information from Ms. Cook about like a data point, I have to say, though, if we aren't helping to introduce it to folks, I would never anticipate that people would get into it either. So it's like the chicken or egg, you know. So I'm sad that currently we can't offer it within the middle school, because I think if we did, and we kind of pushed it a little bit more, we would have the growth of the program, because people would have the familiarity. When you're not familiar with something, a lot of people run away from it. So I, too, would hope that we don't cut it, I hope that we look at opportunities of when we might be able to reintegrate it, but reintegrate it back at a lower level, so we can once again grow the program, because I can't look at high school and just say, oh, it's all on you. I think it's, the decision was made when we decided to make focus in our middle school and broaden things in another way to support some of the learning that we needed, we made a decision then, and more or less, I have to say in my heart, I had a feeling this was coming. I'm not psyched with it at all, and I don't want to lose it, so my hope is that we make a commitment to bring it back in a smart way, so that we can support it along the way, and so that we don't take it out altogether. But I hear what you're saying, I appreciate that people are speaking up about French and having an interest. As a French student, I got tossed out, they didn't like me, so, but whatever, good luck. Personal finance, absolutely, absolutely love this course and this offering. My concern, I would say, is that it's offered once again to our juniors and seniors, and unfortunately, as we all know, everyone's making choices the whole way along about how to get it figured in. So if we're going to provide more opportunities of more space for people to get to it, my hope would be that maybe we could also offer it to, say, 10th graders, because we just don't know how everything's going to fit into people's schedules. Maybe that's an exception to the rule that a 10th grader might get into it, and then that's my hope, where our guidance counselors would actually see upon those discussions with the students about what they want to do, and they help them to figure it out and plan it in, which, Dan, I know that you personally have helped many students along the way that way, but the hard and fast of having it in the book of only 11, 12 makes that tough. So I look for consideration on that. Personal finance is huge. And my last would be around the engineering discussions. So I hear what you're talking about, the breadth of studies that you're looking for, but I think, interestingly, at least with CAD, you're keeping the second level, so first and second level, but with architecture and manufacturing, you were removing that second level, you are only allowing for that first level. So that's something that is concerning to me, because if you sparked interest in one year, you might have somebody that wants at least a second year under their belt to really decide whether they really are interested or not. So if it's possible to potentially look at keeping in a second level as an option to consider, I would think that you're going to have the person with the capabilities, the staff member would be there for their first year, maybe that's an opportunity to consider. So those were things that hit me around what Ms. Bodenheder brought up. And then my next area of questioning really would be around the themes for the teamings in ninth and 10th grade specifically. And, sorry, let me get to that document, so I can actually ask my questions. So in looking specifically at ninth grade, we have on there physics, and you and I've had this conversation over the years at different points in times. Is it not, is there not an opportunity of having bio as an option, as opposed to physics across the board, so that we could have ninth and 10th graders allowing the opportunity of the choice of what they want to initially start studying, so that if they have an interest, they can actually push it out further? Because there's not something specific that we must take bio, or we must take chemistry, or we must take physics. So I'm curious about that.
Yeah, sure, no, it's a great question. So number one, we want our students to be successful when it comes to the MCAS exam, and traditionally, historically, students are more successful on the Introduction to Physics MCAS exam. In addition to that, like with respect to the consistency in ninth grade, when we're offering, so having physics in ninth grade and bio in 10th grade doesn't bar a student from accessing any of the options that they might want to access throughout their four-year trajectory in the science program. So it's not restrictive. The choice component of it is really linked also to the consistency for students and teachers with respect to what they take each year along the way. So all the freshmen are taking the physics together, they're all participating in the physics MCAS together, all the sophomores are taking biology together, those teams are also horizontally linked. So when you have three physics teachers in ninth grade, they have the same schedule, and that allows them to plan and develop curriculum together, that's kind of how we've developed the learning model for teachers in our school. In addition to that, with the sophomores, the same concept works for biology. So when we were originally offering bio as part of that pathway, it was actually a stepping stone to get to physics, being the ninth grade piece, and then bio being the 10th grade piece. And again, it has more to do with continuity and consistency, and the fact that it doesn't eliminate any options for students within the science program. So taking those two steps together helps us create the continuity that we need for the students and the staff when it comes to both MCAS and curriculum planning, and that's why we've done it that way. There are a number of schools, too, who do it in the same way, where they offer the one consistent science for ninth and 10th grade. So we're not a standalone, that's all I wanted to make the point on, when it comes to how we're trying to structure our sciences.
Thank you for the information and insight.
Any other questions from the committee? Any other questions? Ms. Hennessy.
Mr. Riley, one of the things that I didn't see in here, and maybe I just can't find it, maybe you can point me in the direction, I believe civics was supposed to be part of the ninth grade, was it the ninth grade curriculum, or is it just the eighth grade curriculum? I know it's there, I did find civics under the English learners, but not as a standout for the remainder of students.
Yep, no, it's a great question. So civics as a course has to be built into the eighth-grade experience, there is a new civics requirement from the state that needs to be built in at some point during the high school trajectory, and there's a lot of room for how that gets built in. We are looking to most likely utilize the project-based learning experience in ninth and 10th grade to also help promote civic-mindedness, and that would therefore then accomplish that requirement for the state. With the EL course, that is a specific fundamentals course for our language learners, that is more civics-heavy than the world curriculum that the ninth graders take outside of the EL program.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I just ask a question along those same lines? Isn't part of the law, the civics law, that they have to do a project? How is that getting implemented?
Yeah, that's a great question, and that actually goes into a little bit more than my knowledge base on what the requirement absolutely needs to look like. Mr. Reyes, the supervisor of Humanities, is really the one that is the most involved with all the various options, but in the discussions I've had with him, we've kind of landed that the best approach for the model that we have at MHS is to utilize that PBL experience to build it in. I'm sure that there are other options, and I could work with Mr. Reyes to kind of get you the full array of what is offered, so that you could take a look at it. I just, I don't know them right off the top of my head.
He actually presented to us, was that this year or since you've been on, right? I don't know if I'm coming or going these days, but yes, he did present to us, and I just was wondering if there was any more information on that, but thank you.
Any other questions, of course.
Last one, for me. So at some point, would it be possible for us to have a conversation around guidance specifically, like how Allison had brought up around Naviance and how that's kind of all working in? Because I do see that it's mentioned in there, starting within ninth grade, so I think it would be helpful for us to understand how that all integrates with things, to keep everything moving. Obviously, not something here on the spot, just at some point in time, that would be helpful.
Absolutely, and I think, just to kind of give you a preview of the conversations that we have had with the expansion of what I would deem the STEM pipeline concepts in what's called, from the state standpoint, MYCAP. It stands for My Career and Academic Planning. It's the utilization of a tool like Naviance even as early as sixth grade, in order to start to get students to explore and reflect on their career interests, and how their academic trajectory helps to lead them to fulfilling those interests with their post-secondary opportunities. So these conversations, as Superintendent Bergeron knows, are actually ones that we are planning on the horizon to have with the middle school. Ideally, at the high school level, we would love to know that students are already fully in tune and aware of the Naviance structure, how it works, especially with some of the self-interest surveys, some of the reflection tools, so that coming in, we can then build out the trajectory of exploration, mentoring, and internship for students in the nine-to-12 trajectory. So we do have some real serious planning happening with that. At my level, too, especially, Mrs. DeHuracius and Mrs. Chenere have dedicated the majority of their time throughout the year to developing that plan and working on how they could even help support the middle school with some implementation there. So more to come, I probably gave you more than you were expecting to hear tonight, but just know that it is definitely being planned out. It's essential to create, in parallel with the academic opportunity, why students are doing it, for their own aspirations and goals. And if we can create that link along the way, then we're going to help develop a more goal-oriented mindset within our students, which pays huge dividends on their success rates in their academics, in their future success goals.
Dan, it's great, and no, thank you, I mean, that's exactly, that goes back to, you know, flip it around to my first thing, or my second thing, which was about Mandarin, right? If kids understand the why and how it's involved, and they're discussing it at middle school, then it really makes sense as to why to have a trajectory. So that would be great to understand how it's tying back to the middle school, and I'm sure with the Principal House getting started, that will be great to see. So, thank you.
Other questions? I have a question. So it seems like a lot of this is driven by the popularity with the students, and then rounding out some of the students for what the colleges are looking for, and then they go on to college, and colleges teach them what they think they need. How much of this, how much input do we have in these decisions, especially in science, technology, and engineering, from the business community and how many companies? I mean, what kind of interaction did you have in making these decisions, as far as what the, they graduate from college, first thing the companies do is send them back to school, because they didn't learn what they need to actually be in the real world?
Yeah, no, thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's an excellent question. As you know, I think, based on my previous experience as the Director of STEM, I have had a lot of interaction with the business community in Marlboro in terms of the growth of areas like healthcare, advanced manufacturing, information technology, and so specifically in science and engineering, really advanced manufacturing and robotics and automation is what we're looking to expand upon. We are still very interested in working with the local companies in order to develop more of a internship certification opportunity like we have done with the EMT program. So knowing specifically, what courses can we build out? And you're right, absolutely, 100%, I think the business community needs to dictate which of those courses we're offering and why. So for right now, what we're really trying to do is lay a solid foundation in the areas that we know, that we have done the research on, that are growing, both in the Marlboro community and the Commonwealth, in terms of high-paying employment opportunities for students post-secondary. And also, in the event that they decide that they don't want to go to college, I've always said that while we are a comprehensive four-year school, and we will prepare all students for college, some of our students may decide not to go to college, in which case, we want them to be able to go out and seek gainful employment. So definitely need more development in that area with direction from the business community, and I appreciate you bringing that up, and we will continue to do that work, so that we are more aligned with what's needed.
I just think there's some great opportunities, because we say from this side, we need to have more interaction with the business community, the business community says we need more interaction with the schools, and the two never meet. So it's a real problem. I mean, why there's a wall there, we haven't figured it out yet, but we need to fix that. I think we should start on next year's curriculum now and give us, you know, some time to move into it. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. And on the approval?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with the retention of Mandarin and the engineering and architecture and manufacturing additional levels still remaining in there, to not remove them just yet.
Motion made as second to approve as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carries. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful night. Thank you.
Entertainer motion on the FY22 budget.
Motion to approve the budget of, let me get to that page, sorry, 66 million...
66 million, 654,566 dollars.
Thank you.
Motion made as second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carries. Policies for removal, policy 8.310.
Thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion for the removal of policy 8.310, which is the individual student waivers for ELL. We discussed this at the last meeting.
Didn't we vote on them at the last meeting?
No, we...
I thought we voted to remove the two removals. I thought we did.
Remove them again.
Yeah. We'll make sure.
Removing them twice.
And also policy 9.11, I'm sorry, 9.100A.
Actually, it was the 8.310 that we were voting on.
Yeah, can't we do them both?
Oh, we can, sure. Okay. So motion to remove procedures for school visitors, policy 9.100A.
Motion made as second to remove policy 8.310 and 9.100A. Ms. Matthews?
We did vote on them last time.
Yeah, I thought we did.
The minute you said both of them together.
We don't know because we don't have minutes.
I have the minutes that have not been submitted yet, but they're in the minutes.
Yeah, I thought.
We did, we did.
I remember we took music group last time.
Sorry, when I don't have minutes, I can't remember.
Thank you. Policy for acceptance.
Never mind.
Rewind.
Okay, sorry.
Policy 6.500, employee conduct.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion for approval of employee conduct, 6.500.
Motion made as second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carries. 8.1600.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion for approval of 8.600, student dress code policy.
Motion made as second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carries. Policy 9.400.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion for approval of 9.400 with an amendment, a friendly amendment, please. Mrs. Matthews so wisely did point out that it would be wise to not only have the materials in English, but in Spanish and Portuguese. So I added another bullet point under guidelines, which would read, "All material must be prepared by the non-school group and must be in English and translated in Spanish and Portuguese."
Motion made as second to approve as amended. Any further discussion? Ms. Bodenheadiger?
I agree with you 100%. I don't know that has to necessarily be in the policy, only because isn't that kind of a district, Mr. Superintendent? Doesn't every document that goes out to families have to be translated?
Not every single document is translated. And I think, from what I'm hearing, is what I think what I'm hearing from the school committee is our intent is if you would like to distribute something through us for a good cause, we should be able to make sure everyone can access it.
100%.
And these are non-school? So it would mean that as Mr. Bergeron and I had a conversation earlier, in a pinch, the school might be able to help someone, but we can't make that a rule. So we would prefer to say that it needs to come in with the translations executed and ready to go because that's really what we're asking is everything's ready to go, numbers counted. Does that make sense?
Similar to what we had tonight from the Boys and Girls Club.
Exactly. Okay?
Yep.
So that's...
On the motion to approve as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carries.
Thank you very much. And last but not least would be, I'd like to make a motion on policy number 9.600, public relations.
Motion made as second to approve. Any discussion?
I just have a question. I mean, have we ever asked the superintendent for something of this sort?
During our first workshop in August of 2018, we had a discussion on public relations and how we were going to approach communicating to parents. But that was probably the last time, to be honest. I think what we've tried to primarily do is use our updates through our social media platforms to communicate with parents.
And if I could add, that's one of the reasons we actually removed an annual plan because from time to time, there is communication that comes out from the superintendent, whether it be driven by the budget, whether it's something specific because of a program that is necessary. So that was where we felt that removal of the annual plan allowed for just more of a direct communication about what is, why the strategy, what's going on, what the need was. Okay?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, on the motion to approve, all those in favor? Opposed, carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So they're all approved? All of them? Removals?
Reports of subcommittees? Any reports, Ms. Tennessee?
Hi, thank you very much. Policy is having another meeting on Thursday, the 29th. Get ready.
Any other subcommittees? Members forum. Ms. Matthews?
I have reviewed the word and I will be signing it.
Thank you. Any, Ms. Bodenheadiger?
Thank you. So I was contacted by Mrs. Klein from the high school, who is the teacher that, what do you call it, the advisor for the students. And she was asking, and probably Allison has some questions about this, and our policy stipulates that the, you know, by a certain date, the students will vote on the SAC, then the SAC will pick the student rep. And then the student rep will be the student rep for a year. But it doesn't specify the dates involved. So Mrs. Klein was asking about whether or not the expectation would be that Allison or anyone coming after her would be expected to attend the meetings after graduation because we still have meetings June 8th and June 22nd. So one question is, what do we do about Allison? But a bigger question is, you know, we should be able to give the students some better idea of what the expectations of the job that they're signing up for is. And along with that, her question was, does the new term begin with the meetings in July? Like what's the year? Is it just the school year? Is it the year year? And they're going to be voting on who is going to be Allison's replacement in this year.
Is this going to take a requirement of vote of the committee?
Well, we need to give them the answer.
I'm just saying if it is, it needs to be on the agenda.
I can make it up, but I thought we should have a conversation about it.
It needs to be on the next agenda.
Well, what is the will of the committee? Do we want to?
Let the superintendent decide or put it on the next agenda. We can't just talk about things that aren't on the agenda. I'm going through. Why do I have solicitors if we have you?
From a policy standpoint, why don't I pull up that policy?
I mean, I've read the, it's not in the policy. The policy just says that it's good for a year.
What I'm saying is, since we're having a policy meeting on Thursday, why don't, because we have the ability of having new business and I will bring it up under new business and then we can see how it goes from there. Okay? Does that sound good?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Any other members? Any other members?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made as second to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed, carries. Thank you very much.